Appointed hour, I hereby call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for six o'clock on Wednesday, August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. Sherry, would you call the roll?
Chair Quilci.
Here.
Vice Chair Bennett is not here yet. Commissioner Trent?
Here.
Commissioner Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Starkweather?
Here.
Terrific. Pledge of allegiance, Commissioner Trent, would you lead us, please?
Yeah. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Public communications. Item three and four. Okay, terrific. Public communications is the time set aside during this meeting for members of the public to address the Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the Commission, will generally be referred to staff or placed on a subsequent agenda under state law, other than for emergency items. No action can be taken at this meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak during public communications? Sherry, anyone in the waiting room? Okay, very good. We'll move on then to the consent item. The minutes of the regular meeting of August third. Do any commissioners have any refinements to the meeting minutes of August third? Hearing none, could we have a motion?
I move to accept the minutes of August third.
I'll second that.
Very good, thank you. Any discussion? Sherry, call the roll on item one, please.
Quilci?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Starkweather?
Here. I mean, yes. I started remembering school. I remember the school.
Okay, public hearing item on the lot line adjustment, excuse me, at two fourteen Bryant Street.
So, um, excuse me.
Lucas or Maura?
Excuse me, Chair, were you going to do the disclosure of site visits and ex parte?
I'm sorry?
Disclosure, disclosure.
Yes, disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. The only, the only site we had is two fourteen Bryant. Have, has anyone made any contacts on this since the last meeting? Because we all said no at the last meeting. So, no, I haven't talked to anyone. Okay, very good, thank you. So, item two, the public hearing item on the lot line adjustment, take it away.
The lot line adjustment was requested for two fourteen. Have that address right?
Bryant Street.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I had the two fourteen correct. Thank you. It was submitted for a lot line adjustment and the Planning Commission reviewed this request at their July sixth hearing and they continued it to tonight with direction to staff and the applicant to gather pertinent information regarding the potential of underground tanks. A radius report, radius map report was provided by a commissioner at that meeting and the Planning Commission asked the applicant to submit the phase one that we understood, we were told that they had. Since the meeting, staff contacted Rincon Consultants who prepared that phase one and found out that, that the radius map report was prepared as part of that phase one. And Rincon Consultants believes that the six tanks that are identified in the radius map report are likely not there, that the report is likely inaccurate. But the only way to find that out for sure, they told me and they also told the applicant during a separate phone, separate call and also in the phase one report, which I briefly reviewed today, that the only way to see for sure if there are underground tanks is to do a geophysical study. And so staff has asked the applicant to provide a geophysical study for review before we come back to the Planning Commission and we'd like you to continue this to a date uncertain, since we don't know when we're going to get that study.
Okay, yeah, as, as I recall from the last meeting, the outstanding question here was, does the proposed new lot line cross over an underground storage tank? If so, then there could be questionable liability regarding the two different parcels. I did mention to Lucas, I think all it really needs to be done with the ground penetrating radar or whatever they use, is to go along that new proposed lot line and maybe ten feet either side. These are big tanks, if they're there at all. They don't have to do the whole thing, I would think. And, and if there is nothing found along that boundary, then any other purported tanks are a matter between two private parties if one of the parcels sells. So, are they working on that? Don't know.
We don't know if they're working on that. We, we did receive just yesterday the phase one study and staff as well as Rincon Consultants let them know that the only way to find out of where the tanks are, if there are tanks, is through that geophysical study. It looks like Lucas has something to say. Oh.
Okay.
Can I?
Since, since Rincon Consultants says this radius map report may be inaccurate, do we know where the data ever came from in the first place?
That radius map report is something that they acquired during the phase one study and it's through a company that kind of puts out their fingers or, you know, out their, their own radar and to government sources to look for information. And they don't prepare the study themselves, but it is part of a phase one. I, I don't have an answer to, for you as to why.
We don't know the provenance of this data.
Correct.
Yeah, the only way to really, to know whether or not that data has, has any sort of legitimacy is to actually do the geo, what do we call it?
It's a geophysical study.
Geophysical study, which is actually going out. Ground penetrating radar is what you're going to talking about and then seeing if those tanks truly are, where this line is potentially going to go. We can talk to them about, about the details of that.
If there are tanks and they're some ways, someplace else, I don't see that as, as a topic that's appropriate to the Planning Commission.
Yeah.
All we care about is this lot line adjustment at this point.
And that's kind of where we're at right now. We, we literally twenty-four hours ago got the, finally got the phase one. So now we're taking a look at that. And in the process, we've identified to them in writing that they need to go through that next phase, which is the geophysical study, so.
Basically prove a negative or hope, prove a negative.
Right, and in terms of the legitimacy of, of whether or not that data is old or new, it's, it's difficult to tell just simply because they're taking it probably from a, from a, a large bucket of source. And whether or not those sources have been verified is, is unknown. And that's the reason why we're doing this, this other, this other step. Kind of pivoting from, from what we saw with the radius.
The phase one study acknowledges the, the radius map report and also states what the consultant told to me, told me on the phone, which is that it's unlikely that the study is accurate. It actually says that in the phase one. So, but besides that, right now, as far as the applicant is concerned, they're to find, they're to do a geophysical study to see if there are underground tanks, period. It doesn't say that they are to get a, a study done just where the lot line is proposed. So are we changing that, which, which staff has already?
Yeah, we've already told them for the, for, for basically both sites. They need, they need to do that. If the Commission wants to direct staff to talk with the applicant about focusing that into one area, we can certainly go back to the table and talk to them about that. I don't know if that would change the cost from them, from them, from that standpoint.
I don't know whether it would or not.
Yeah.
I know it, the more narrowly focused survey would answer the question, I think, that the Commission has. Whether there are or aren't other tanks under the ground, they're not pierced by a, a lot line. I'm not sure that it's our place to care.
Uh, we, at that last meeting, we covered issues beyond just the tanks.
Yeah, there's other, there's other things we're looking at.
Issues raised that you were going to check into, so I assume that's still going to happen.
Yeah, there's going to be updates on the other items that were discussed as well.
I just want to make sure that.
But we're focusing on.
Long term, we'll need that information anyway.
I'm sorry?
I think long term, we'll need that information.
Uh, survey of the entire, of both entire parcels?
Yeah.
If they ever intend to.
I think the buyer would certainly want that information.
Sure.
Yeah. I'm not, all I was saying was, I'm not sure it's relevant to the request in front of the Planning Commission to change the lot line.
Unless there's something leaking across the lot, on the line that's underground, that's not on the other side.
If there's, if there's something that messes up the cleanliness of that lot line, then we are concerned about it, right? Interesting. So, the request from staff is to continue this item to a date uncertain, off calendar. That means when it does come back, you're going to have to renotice everyone.
Yes.
Right.
You're sufficiently uncertain about when that might be.
Yeah, I don't think it's fair to put a date on it at this point, given, given the context and the information we have today.
All right, well, what do you think?
I'll move to continue this to a date uncertain based on the information that the staff gets.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, any other thoughts? Discussion? All right, let's call the roll on item two then, on the motion to continue to a date uncertain.
Quilci?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Starkweather?
Yes.
All right. Well, let's move on then to item three, a work program item. And as I understand it, the discussion tonight is whether or not the rules and regulations about VMU should be moved from chapter two, article five, to chapter two, article six. And the discussion tonight is not about the details of what's in the text to be moved. But if we decide as a Commission that it's appropriate to make that move, that is, move VMU from commercial and manufacturing to special purpose zones, then staff will come back with an appropriate text amendment to accomplish that. Is that about?
Absolutely, so, um, just give a little bit of background and context to kind of set the table here for the discussion. And then I have other information I want to provide to this, to this body and introduce someone as well. First, the history of, of kind of the VMU and how this all came, came about and how the discussion kind of started. This was first brought to, to, I would say, staff and council's attention and, and probably Planning Commission's attention at that, at that point. Probably in twenty sixteen when the short-term rental, the STR ordinance was coming on board and being adopted by council. And what that really brought forward was some concerns with the way in which VMU operates and lives within the commercial manufacturing zoning district. And whether or not that, the way in which it operates should, should be relocated just because of the context of how it operates and being moved into what's referred to as the special, the special use zoning district or the special purpose zoning district. So, the, so the differences between the two really is, one, you have commercial, residential, manufacturing and the uses for the, the districts that live within that are the C one BP, M one MPD, and obviously VMU at this point. The special purpose zoning district though has OS, which is open space, the IRs, which is IR one, two, and three, which is the institutional residential. Just to give you an example of, of uses that are within there, you have, you have Ojai Valley Inn and Spa that lives within that. You have, you have the, the school district that lives within that. You have some inherent, unique uses that live within that. And then you have the PL, which by, by its own right has very unique uses that live within that. And then you have the agricultural district, which really is the fringes of, of the city, is what we're looking at there. So the VMU, to a certain degree, has this inherent, it, it almost feels like it's a stepchild in the, in the fact that it's living within the commercial manufacturing district. Living within the special use zoning district probably fits it and suits it better, given the fact that it's mixed use.
But has residential land uses that are not part of CNM.
Correct, correct. That's one of the arguments, another argument could be, you don't go through a variance with, with the village mixed use. You go through a PDP, a planned development permit. Similar to a variance, but has very unique ways in which it functions and the ways in which you can address some inconsistencies. So it's different, a variance is very, when you think of a variance, you think of very strict protocols and standards, it's addressed through state law. The PDP is not. It has very entrenched, I can't go to another city and say, well, use a PDP. That, it, it's unique. I think that's really what, what we're kind of looking at here is the village mixed use zone itself is unique. And if, if we look at where the special purpose zoning districts, each one of those districts operates, they kind of operate uniquely in terms of how they function. C one BP, M one, you could go to other cities and find very similar formats in terms of how C one, M one operate. It's not true with village mixed use within this city and within this context. So I, I wanted to kind of set the table from a discussion standpoint, but trying to keep it still at high, high level. Obviously, we have two attachments, attachment A, attachment B, which really kind of look at the redlined version. Well, I actually had a new staff member that I'll bring up here right now. Alexander, could you come up here to the podium? So I've got Alexander here, he's, he's literally, you started two weeks ago?
Yes, sir.
So he started two weeks ago. I want to welcome Alexander De Silva. He comes to us, he actually worked with the federal government in DC for several years. Got fed up with that and decided to come back home to Thousand Oaks. And he's pursuing a graduate degree at Cal Poly Pomona. We've just brought him on, he's our new advanced planner as part-time.
How is an advanced planner different from an associate planner?
Uh, there is no difference. Aside from an associate planner, for instance, with Mara, she focuses on current planning or the stuff that you just see here on day-to-day basis that has very strict timelines that are set by state government. Here, he's my big think tank individual, where we're looking at a lot of the, the work. Exactly, the work plan products that you're seeing, that we talk about every two weeks. He's going to be focusing on that. The Title X stuff that we're talking about, VMU in terms of relocating that potentially, he is entrenched in a lot of that, what's going on. The formula business discussion that we're going to be having in the future, as, as some of you cringe, I know, but.
We have our sympathy, Alex.
Certainly, he is, he is, he is focused in on that. Alex, did I miss, miss anything? Do you want to fill in at, at all?
No, just, just happy to be here and I'm looking forward to learning under Lucas and Mara.
And you prefer to be addressed as Alex?
Yes, sir, yeah. I, Alexander, I feel like I'm in trouble from my parents, so.
He's a award-winning sax player.
Oh, yeah, he has a degree in jazz, that was the other thing.
Well, you can add start playing.
He's bringing a lot to the table.
You come, you gotta play locally.
Uh, anything for the team, yeah.
Yeah, so thank you. So he's, certainly you're going to see him.
Welcome, yeah. I think some background music while we're deliberating would be good.
Maybe a little entertainment would get more audience.
Yes.
Well, we, we get enough of that as it is right now. So anyway, I, that's, so getting back to the, the matter, that's kind of the discussion piece for tonight. Are we necessarily going line by line through this? I, I don't know that that's necessary at this point. I think, thinking big picture, I will say that I've, I've already started looking at some of the code sections to seeing what sort of, is there an impact in how this, this, uh, this district is being relocated from one area to another? Is there any sort of intrinsic impacts that are, are potentially befalling it? And I've started looking at like the tree ordinance, noise ordinance, temporary use permits.
Those are all in separate articles that apply whichever place this.
Yeah, so you've really got to be, you've really got to be thinking beyond the context of just simply taking all of the text from one area and moving it over to another. If you, if you're just simply looking at that, you've got blinders on, you're not thinking about the whole picture for Title X and how that's impacted into the future. So we've got to be thinking about that, because I think a lot of the, a lot of the, the issues that we've been seeing with Title X is because individuals weren't necessarily, they had the blinders on, they were just addressing the things at hand. Not to say that this Commission or Council were discredited or even staff at that time, they just weren't thinking big picture. And I'm, I'm, what I'm looking for here is to make sure that we're thinking the big picture in terms of what those impacts are. It's not to simply strike out and underline and let's call it a day. There's more to this, I think, than that. And I think we need to, to make sure that we.
Well, beyond the land use tables and the development standards tables that are in both articles, and they are different, there is general material in each article that at, at present, one set of general material applies to VMU. And if we move, if we decide to move the text, a different set of general material will apply to VMU.
Right.
And so, what are the differences there?
So, if you're looking at how, wait, you, when you say the general text, are you talking the general text where, where we're going from article five to article six? Are you talking about what the impacts could be beyond article five or article six?
If there are provisions in the code that are outside Title X, chapter two, article five, and article six, then they are going to apply or not apply as the language dictates.
Well, I think.
But the differences between the language in article five and the language in article six could have an impact on VMU if we move that zone from one to the other.
Yeah, so I think some of the concerns that I'm, I'm noticing is, and it's going to be a kind of a deeper dive, is the noise ordinance. I think I'm going to certainly have something that, that speaks to the potential impacts and potential revisions to how that is, is affected. I think temporary use permits, there may have to be some clarification on that as well. Right now.
Explain these things rather than just give us names of issues?
The noise ordinance is like in Title Four or something, isn't it?
It is, it's in a different title. So no, when I, when I say that we're looking at only Title X, I'm also looking beyond that, because the noise ordinance constantly, when we bring projects forward, we're, we're having that inherent discussion about what the, how that, how the noise ordinance is impacting that use or vice versa.
So right now, the noise ordinance is referenced in the commercial and manufacturing?
It's referenced as VMU specifically, as it's identified. And I think we need to make sure that we, we kind of narrow that in and take a look at what that, what that means for moving from article five to article six.
So if it's referring to VMU and you're just physically moving it, why wouldn't it still refer to VMU the same way?
If it's in, if it's in Title Four, I think it does.
Well, you can always change titles where you're going with things, but I'm just saying, what, is there something about moving it to a special purpose district, which is kind of a standalone thing, that can't be done by just giving the, the, the references to VMU?
Here's, here's probably the way that I'll describe that. It speaks to commercial manufacturing and then it also identifies VMU. The question is, is with it now going to the special use or the special purpose zoning district, is there an impact to how that, that now is addressed or handled? Because you have commercial and then you have residential. Residential is pretty straightforward, but let's not forget, VMU also has residential as permitted use.
So maybe it should have its own noise ordinance, given that it's.
That's one of the.
Conflict between potential.
That's one of the discussion.
Before this board, as I understand it.
That's one of the discussion pieces, certainly. Yeah, so that's, when I say that there's potential concerns, that's one of them that I'm seeing. I just want to make sure that we're not creating an issue by solving an issue.
So don't we need to look, because obviously when we were at the, the land use meeting, we were asked questions about the VMU and what should be done with it and so forth. Shouldn't we resolve that first before we worry about moving it?
By moving it, what's the impact? I think that's really what you're looking at.
It's really, yeah, that, that's what I'm thinking.
But why move it until we figured out how we're going to deal with it?
Well, if, if the noise ordinance is supposed to apply somehow differently to VMU than it does to commercial or manufacturing or any of the special purpose districts, that, that's a general clarification in the code that we need to make at some point.
Sounds like a land use policy question.
Right now, it's an independent requirement. It's independent of all those zones.
Yeah, but it seems like there are unique concerns in a VMU that you don't have in a commercial industrial, so. Because you literally have houses next to commercial. So how we handle that?
You might have house and commercial in the same building.
That's true, we do have that too. So that, that seems like a, a something that we ought to focus on. Because I know there's been complaints about it, obviously, that we ought to focus on how the noise should be handled in a VMU.
But that's kind of separate from what we're being asked tonight.
But I'm just saying, why, why we, why do we move something? Why we haven't even figured out what the substance of the thing we're moving is?
Well, in, in, in the proposed move right now, are we changing any of the, the requirements that currently apply to the VMU?
No.
Okay.
Right, yeah, there's no, there's no changes in terms of the development standards, in terms of the uses. All of those are remaining the same as they exist within article five over to article six.
So it's really the other material in article five and the other material in article six, which if it is different, could have a differential impact on VMU.
Right.
And things that are outside Title X, chapter two, article five, and article six, I could easily agree that they need to be worked on, but I don't think they're relevant to this.
So, as I recall from the last time, I don't know that I was even on the board when I heard this, but anyway, uh, that there was an issue around the purpose of commercial manufacturing that didn't seem to apply to VMU. Recall that discussion?
Yeah.
Um, so, that, that seemed to be a, you know, sort of a logical analysis type of thing. So now, when you go to VMU, I mean, go to special use things, they each have their own purpose. So does our current VMU list what its purpose is already?
Yes.
So it's there, we don't need to worry about that.
Yeah, it's moving it, yeah, it's moving it over, it's not changing any of that language.
Language on attachment A, page one, applies specifically to VMU. Should, I think, be moved in total. It may take different paragraph numbering and such as that if it moves to article six.
Yeah, and one thing that I, that I did note is when applying the new, the VMU to the use chart within article, article six, if you notice, it gets extremely long because VMU addresses a lot of different uses where your special purpose district is very thin in terms of the different uses. Yeah, they've all kind of got their little buckets. VMU has a much larger bucket and that's really expanded that use chart. It's not saying that, oh, we've created a brand new, much larger use chart. It's like, no, what's really happening is VMU is covering a lot of different uses for obvious reasons. Because it's a much larger portion of the city than, than these other, well, I guess IRs one, two, and three cover a lot of areas well.
Couldn't it have its own district? Not even have to be a special district?
It could, I don't want to overcomplicate it. I think that's, could it? It could. I don't want to overcomplicate it and create yet another, I think, well, in Title X, I think the goal, I think the overall goal is to try to find a way to, to squeeze it down, not to, you know, increase the, the complexity of that code. It's already complex as it exists right now. I mean, I'm a professional in this and I read it and it's, it gets, it get complex very quickly.
So I, I wondered, just from a planning theory standpoint, having a lot of special districts seems like a not very organized way of having planning ordinance. It's like a constant, everything, all these special districts, rather than having it logically connected, is that, is that a problem?
Seems very flexible to me.
It is flexible, yeah, it's like.
Well, I mean, and there's cities that. Well, I mean, and there's cities that have a lot of specific plans, like there're cities that their entire zoning has already, it just consists of specific plans.
Ojai has two or three specific plans.
Just special.
It does. They've just been folded into the, the zoning code.
Maybe we should call them all special districts.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, if you were to put a narrative on this area, Village Mixed Use, it was created because we wanted to be able to have some zoning that would cover places where we have uses adjacent to one another, and we wanted them to feel comfortable with each other that they were in the right place, that we had a, a, a land use table and map which said Village Mixed Use. Oh, you belong there because you're a, you know, it's okay there for you to be Less Sinks Auto, Automotive Repair Shop across the street from a house, across the street from a barber shop, and that's okay. And so a village mixed use was created for places like that. At least what I've seen in the brief time that I've been dealing with these issues here is that, that residential's almost always involved, that manufacturing isn't always involved, and, and commercial's not always involved, but residential's virtually always involved. So why wouldn't it be, why wouldn't it be clustered there? It is residential when other things are adjacent to residential.
For the simple answer that, I'll just give you a simple answer. Residential, tho- all of those zones.
Yeah.
Are, are residential.
Right.
There's not a commercial link to it or, or some sort of like.
There are home business licenses for residential properties.
Yeah, home occupation permits would be, the hops is, is one piece to the residential, but those are very low impact and, and very, the, the standards for those are litmus test is very thin. Um, in terms of, of it being within residential, just from a planning standpoint, it doesn't seem to make sense. Uh, when you think of mixed use, think of mixed use as in two, probably in two different formats, excuse me. The first is, there are cities out there as a solution to, um, kind of what their original culture is or was for those areas when they first developed. For instance, a lot of these areas are what orig- what was originally Ojai. So you have a lot of different uses really kind of prior before zoning was really a thing. Um, and to solve that, because you have, like you said, competing uses trying to harmonize within the same area, mixed use was developed. I think that's the first reason, or the first purpose for why mixed use was developed. The second is to increase density. I don't think that's the case here with what we're looking at. I think the density is very low from, from a mixed use standpoint for this type of mixed use. So the second one is out. The first one is definitely in. And there's two different ways in which a city solves that. They either create a, a historic district and they figure out a solution for that, and they put very strict standards on it. I've seen that in other cities. Here, the solution was to create village mixed use, recognizing within that that there is still a lot of single family. They said, why would we make it non-conforming? Let's maintain that conformance and allow for residential, single family residential to reside within it, recognizing that it's really kind of covering all three prongs to a certain degree, residential, commercial, and to some degree, um, small M manufacturing, I guess, to a certain degree, or industrial, small I, uh, with auto dealer, um, or auto mechanic type, type of uses. I see that in a couple of different areas.
Chair, could I address the question?
So, anyway, what I'm getting at is mixed, I just want to finish my thought and then we can open the floor. Mixed use for what we're talking about here is unique for Ojai. Typically, when you're looking at mixed use, you're not looking at single family residential as well. They've, this city has recognized that, that, that even though there is an opportunity for, for maybe more density in certain areas because of the, you know, because of whatever's going on in that certain area, maybe a couple more units or something like that, it recognizes that single family is still, um, a player. If it wasn't, it'd be non-conforming immediately, identifying that eventually you want to phase it out. That's, that's a typical strategy that you see here, and I think.
A lot of people that, that hear village mixed use, they think live, work.
Mm-hmm.
But it's live, work, commercially sell.
Mm-hmm.
Which does make it different from residential because a home, home occupation, I don't think allows for that, for retail sales per se. I'm not positive, but.
No, you're correct.
It is.
That's correct.
And so that's one reason it doesn't fit in residential. Um, but it certainly does, and it, it sort of overlaps commercial. I don't see much in the way of manufacturing, little M manufacturing, a.
So can I?
Doilies in your back room or something, but, um, it, it feels special to me.
Can I respond to this question? Because in, in planning theory, it's what we call new urbanism. It was, and actually, people that were back there then told me that. New urbanism was the idea of trying to create vitality.
Live, work.
Particularly when, when like townhouses and stuff are converting.
Mm-hmm.
The businesses, often they're on the edges of downtowns, and the idea there's younger people, and people like to have that mix of, of commercial and residential, you know, some, over time, some of these single family homes become, you know, a, a number of people living in them, they break them up.
Or they become businesses.
Or they become businesses. So the idea is it creates sort of a vitality of city life. You go back to Jane Jacobs and Life and Death of American Cities. That's what her whole theory was, that we were destroying these vital, you know, like Greenwich Village, because we were separating uses and, uh, you know, and downtowns were becoming empty.
So you approve of VMU?
I approve of the concept. I don't know how, you know, I'm not been involved to know it, what, but sometimes people have a hard time adjusting to it, thinking they're still in a residential solely neighborhood, you know? But that, the idea is to create vitality near your downtown and, and maybe more density.
And maybe a transition to purely residential.
Yes, and a transition zone and so forth. That's the concept. Whether it's working or not, I don't, I can't speak to that.
Yeah, but the question before us now is, does it make sense to move this from Article Five to Article Six?
Yeah, and I, I got a couple of questions, so.
And, and.
Go ahead.
It sounds to me a lot like we're deliberating that issue right now.
Yeah, we should let someone speak.
And we should probably, if we're through asking specific questions of Lucas.
I had a couple.
Please go ahead.
Okay.
Once the words were done with that, then we'll have public comment.
Okay, cool. So I just want to make sure I'm clear. Um, so my understanding is very similar to, to Jeffries in that the fact that it's kind of this new urbanism design and it serves as a transition between residential and commercial. So like the arcade, C1, commercial, right? And then you've got residential, which is beyond Grand Avenue, it's like daily drive area that, that, so you have to have a transition zone between those two. You can't just have residential homes right next to the arcade because there's all kinds of noise and parking and all kinds of other issues, right? So it serves as that transition. So I see where it makes sense in the commercial space, but I guess my question is, um, the real issue that this came from was the temporary rental, right? And is that because that applies only to residential and it doesn't apply to commercial?
It's tied directly to residential, yes.
Got it. Okay. And in the code and the language, it's saying VMU is tied to commercial.
Yes, but the thing is, is within the STR, it also includes VMU.
Okay, gotcha.
And those, those residential uses that live within there as well.
Okay, okay, gotcha. And then another question. Um, as we're looking at potential impacts downstream, um, what you've found so far is pretty minimal, just sound is, is mostly it?
Yeah, my, my preliminary assessment is, is pretty minimal.
Okay.
I'll have to admit, but I, I think it's important that as we move forward, that I'll be highlighting those, those areas for a larger discussion.
Okay, okay, cool. Um, let's see. I think that was mainly it. Okay, all right.
Okay.
I'm good.
All right, then we'll open the public hearing. I have three cards for comments on item three. First, Mr. Wirick.
I'm the one that put this on the work plan. Uh, and the reason for it was stimulated by a number of situations where we had to make special provision in updating the code to make sure that the residential, um, character of VMU was protected because it was not protected automatically by saying that certain provisions applied to residential zones. So it had to be residential zones plus a VMU because of the way it was classified as commercial and manufacturing. I also realized from some of the history, and I'm, you know, been at this a while, was that there was this debate, uh, originally, and when the, if you look at the date of the original reorganization of the zoning, of the zoning code that occurred, um, there was an, an element, sort of a pro-development, uh, element that wanted this classified as commercial and manufacturing because they were looking at, uh, basically, you know, frankly, hollowing out some of that residential character, which I consider disturbing. I think it's important that the residential character of the VMU be preserved. It's a, I think, an essential part of what our community is. And therefore, when you look at the preamble to the commercial and manufacturing, uh, area, you'll look at purpose defined, I think, what most people do not view as appropriate for the character of the, the VMU, which it does not talk about preservation of, uh, the zoning character in the preamble to that section. And therefore, that frames, for all of us, you know, in the, in the, looking down the road, that frames how this will be, how people will be evaluating this in the future and when we're all gone. And I think it's important that we, um, uh, look at it as a, uh, moving to the special district where the purpose is defined within, uh, the definition. The purpose is defined within the whole of a special district, as opposed to being subject to interpretation of, oh, well, it's commercial manufacturing and you see the purpose there, and therefore, you know, when, if it's a gray area, let's just do away with some residential capacity, uh, that's close to downtown, which I think is an essential part of what Ojai is. And I think it should be preserved, and that's why I think, uh, moving it from where it's subject to a preamble interpretation in terms of evaluation for projects to self-contained in a special district area is extremely important for the preservation of our residential character, uh, in the downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Miley?
For the record, my name is Bill Miley. I've studied the report referencing the zoning maps, only to find that I didn't need to do that, because that's not what the issue is. It took me a while to understand it. Um, just as an aside, I don't see VMU as being really new. Santa Barbara has older neighborhoods with corner grocery stores. They've been there for fifty, sixty years, and hardware stores. So this is how I understand what the issue is. So one reason to move it is that VMU does not allow manufacturing businesses, so moving it from commercial to, um, special purpose gets us away from that and corrects that. I understood that, okay? Second part, the second reason is, where to put it? And to put it in special purpose. I had to look that up to find out what that was all about. So it doesn't seem to me that it's a, given zoning anyplace, it's a, it's a file that you can put it in. Open space, agricultural, institutional recreation, three different sizes, and public quasi-public, and now VMU. It's like a category to put it in. Can't find it or, okay. Hold on, to show you that I read it carefully. There appears to be a typo on page seven. Maybe not, but it needs correcting. It seems like item five.
A or B?
Item five.
Attachment B.
Page seven, item five. The word width, I thought should be within. Says within enclosure.
Are you page seven to sixteen? Is that where we're looking?
It's, um, under notes at the bottom.
Nine or seven of sixteen?
And, uh, six to six, I'm, okay, I thought it was seven. It says, "All uses shall be constructed with an enclosed structure." I thought that probably might have meant within an enclosed structure, but maybe not. Okay, that was just, tell you, I wrote it carefully. And the last thing I have to say is, the document is well-written as a planning document, but I think it's difficult for the public to read. I do have a suggestion for what I would call easier understanding. How about having an executive summary at the very beginning, written not by a planner, but by our public information coordinator, who is now our interim assistant city manager? But I read it and I understand it because I look at the details. I think I understand it. But I am unusual because many of my friends tell me that they don't do that. Most folks don't work that hard. So a simpler summary would help it become more transparent to many more folks. There are not many here, and there are not many on Zoom. That would help create more public understanding of what our government does. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. And Larry Steingold?
Thank you. Larry Steingold, citizen, taxpayer, property owner, voter, and just general, all around here. Um, the VMU, there's a VMU in every city in the world, okay? They all started out as little villages, and they all tend to be, and they want to save them because they're cute and they're quaint, and they bring in money, and people live there, and they're the center of town. So we shouldn't have to reinvent the wheel, okay? People live where they work. It's a village, okay? Which leads me to this. A cup, as far as I know, in my five, my years of experience and being in California, is essentially a way to tie up people, drown them in time, and aggravate them, and stop them from doing anything for about a year, essentially. It controls who goes there. You have in a village cup. You have a flor- a, excuse me. What is permitted? What's not? Alcohol beverage sales, a cup. Keep them from pouring. Bakery, a retail bakery in a cup. It's not permitted, you have to be tortured, okay? A candy confectionery shop, a cup. A delicatessen, a cup. Electronic equipment sales, a cup. All little businesses that belong in villages now that you get to keep them out for about a year or more, and if they find something wrong, they kick them out and keep them going. Those things should be permitted. There's other reasons to stop people. They don't have the right vents, they don't have the right fire coats, whatever. There's a ton of reasons, but that shouldn't be a reason to keep them out of a village. They, you should want them in a village. People go live in villages, right? They get to go to a delicatessen, but you can't let the delicatessen in because the delicatessen's across the street, no disrespect. That's why cups are put in, to protect businesses that are already there. Just like twenty-five-foot buffers were used to convince homeowners to go to the VMU zoning, which is what you have in your back of your house, twenty-five feet, which is okay, but now twenty-five feet, now you're working around that for sound and how to use that. I think that's to be complimented. You're rewriting the code. I would also suggest an ad hoc committee to go over all code things that the city does so that they're not in conflict. And review these things. How many of them should be sunset? Anyway, so I got forty-three seconds left. Um, but anyway, that's what I'm interested in, is getting the VMU to be a village, not a cup, all right? Why would you want to keep somebody taking a year to do it? So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Point of order, just in the future. If anybody, the next resident or, or speaker that comes to the counter, please, please speak to the commission, not to the audience in the future. Thank you.
I'm just saying, speak, make sure you speak.
Yeah, yeah, oh, sorry. Next conference.
That's why the day is, or the lectern faces. That's why the day is, or the lectern faces this way.
Want to close, sir?
Do we have any?
That's fine. You're all right.
Sherry, do we have anyone in television land that wishes to speak? All right, then we're going to close the public hearing. Or do we, we're closing public comment here, not a public hearing. This is not a public hearing item. Okay, and bring it back to the commission to discuss. Do we, do we think of reasons to move this from Article Five to Article Six or reasons not to move it from Article Five to Article Six? That's the question before us tonight.
I haven't heard any reasons not to, so I guess we might as well.
The details of the text, if it lands in Article Six, will come back to us as a text amendment that we can discuss in more detail and discuss policy issues if we choose to.
I, I would.
But we could also do that as a separate transaction.
At some point, given that this zone seems to be of some controversy at times and concern about what it actually means and how it works.
That's true of a lot of the code.
But I think this particular one would deserve some attention. So we completely, now, some of us are new here, but how exactly, I'm just reading it here and I'm trying to figure out how it works. Um, and it might be useful for the public to have a better sense because we get these disputes. Um, and they may not realize the purpose or exactly how it works because they're just seeing the product. They're not seeing the rules. And I think it would be useful to go, you know, starting with the purpose, why we have it, history, you know, does it need to evolve?
When we discuss the details.
And, yeah, when we get to those details.
Yes.
I think that would be useful for us and the public.
Right.
Okay.
Commissioner Murphy?
I think it makes good sense to take it out of the manufacturing zone.
Okay. Sir?
Yeah, I mean, I don't see any reason why not to do it. Um, I, I appreciate Mr. Wirick's explanation of, of why it was potentially put in the commercial, uh, zone and why it's being looked at as needing to be broken out to protect that residential flavor, which I understand. And, and maybe it was put in the commercial so we could expand businesses and we could, you know, um, grow, uh, our overall commercial, uh, economic value. But I, I don't know if it's appropriate in that commercial space. I think it makes more sense in its own little niche.
And there are, there are parts of the current VMU that are purely residential.
Yes, absolutely.
It runs up to the middle of Euclid Street. Les Hinks' business was mentioned. That's on Oak.
Yep.
And the VMU runs a block north of that, and it's all houses up there.
Yep.
But I, I agree with you. There's no reason not to move it. That, that makes sense right now, independent of the details of the material. So could we have a motion?
I'll move that we take it out of, uh, commercial manufacturing and put it in its own little special zone.
In Article Six.
Big special zone, excuse me.
Article Six.
An Article Six.
Second.
And I would, I would just, could I just add on to, to your, just to clarify it?
Yes, sir.
And then something along the lines of directing staff to then put together a resolution that includes
Okay, yes.
either the term sheet or a draft ordinance that addresses the, the move.
I will include that, and I'm not going to try to restate it.
Something along those lines, just so that we're clear in terms of next steps.
Do you want to include a term sheet or a, or a draft text amendment?
So I, yeah, I don't, I don't think, Commissioner Starkweather hasn't heard of a term sheet.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so the difference between, just, just to give the thirty seconds, the difference between a draft ordinance is you're actually seeing what council will be looking at into the future. The term sheet is what could also be included as a, as a part of the resolution, which would then, we'd take that material, fold it into an ordinance that would then be forwarded to city council. The term sheet would still outline the, um, the revisions that would be made, and really what it is.
Rationale.
And the rationale that would go before it, which would probably be in the beginning, which is typically what we do. So we talk about purpose, like you were talking about before, um, as well as some of those fine details, and then go into what those changes would be.
It sounds like we want both.
Well, I could cover that in the staff report as well. Term sheets, sometimes we do that in the very beginning, um, before we even go through any of this. Uh, I folded some of that in the staff report.
In this case, we're not really proposing to change the, the details of the materials.
Yeah, this one actually is more of a house cleaning versus.
So you want a text amendment?
Text amendment.
Yeah, I think the, the text amendment is actually easier in this case. We're probably beyond.
I'll include that.
It is.
It is, great. Any more discussion? And Sherry, would you call a roll on item three, please?
Quillacy?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Brent?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Starkweather?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, item four, priorities of the Planning Commission and the Community Development Department. We do have one speaker after you introduce this material, sir.
Thank you. So as this commission, as, as I want to remind this commission, this item is on every agenda. Um, what I want to do is always hone in on where we're at with it. And, um, I tend to highlight those areas which we're either going to be discussing in a future meeting or what we are discussing at a current meeting. So in this case, we have Title Ten VMU zoning, um, from C, from commercial manufacturing to special purpose. That has been highlighted because we just, we just got done talking about it. But I also want to highlight that formula business ordinance, that will be coming before this commission in the near future. We're reaching out to, um, those entities, business owners, and, um, as I had alluded to earlier, we brought up, um, Alex, he is certainly going to be intimately involved in that, so you'll see his face as well in the future. Um, those are the two that are kind of being focused on right now. Uh, just to give a brief update, a few weeks back, there was a workshop that was a part of the general plan update. That was on August second. Um, the interesting thing that came out of that, um, the attendance was, I think we had about forty people in total online and in person. Um, since
Questionnaires.
Since then, quite, more questionnaires have been filled out. Today, we actually extended the deadline for those questionnaires to be filled out, and we've extended another week and a couple of days. And as soon as I sent out that, um, invite to individuals, I've already received half a dozen, um, inquiries. So we're, we're moving in the right direction. We've got a little over a hundred people or individuals that have responded. We're looking for a little bit more to make sure that we've got a round, well-rounded, um, pool, essentially, in terms of information coming in.
So you have numbers, like a hundred, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Do you have any way of knowing the demographic makeup of the people, whether it's matching the demographic makeup of the city of Ojai?
Yeah, the consultants are going to put together, um, the summary, and we'll be getting, we'll be getting those numbers. Similar to the summary that was done for the visioning workshop that was done in March of 2021, so. We'll be seeing that shortly. They're working on it, but we have to close, we have to close it and so they can start doing that, that deep, that deep dive and pulling up that information summary.
On the, uh, on the formula business ordinance, it seems to me there were two major questions. One was, how many of you do there have to be for you to become a formula business?
Mm-hmm.
And what is the list of characteristics of your business that having two or three of the list, or whatever the number was, uh, actually works, and what's on that list? And as I recall, we, we were looking at common ownership. We were looking at digital marketing, I believe.
Yeah.
And, and there were some questions about, in, with digital marketing in particular, what does that mean? And so that was part of what staff was looking at.
I think we were also looking at the definition of retail, wasn't that?
Perhaps we were. I don't, I don't recall.
Yeah.
So it came down to how many of you and what characteristics are going to be on the list that having two or three, or whatever the number was, makes you
A formula.
Not allowed.
Yeah.
So we're taking a look at.
Kind of where we are?
Yeah, we're taking a look at those pieces, and we're gonna, we're inviting, uh, business owners to really kind of take a, a closer look at that. So that's, that's where it's at right now. I wanted to give the commission an update that it's not stale, that it is moving forward, um, behind the scenes right now. We'll, we'll be bringing something forward in the near, near term.
Fire suppression mitigation appeals to me because we're about, we're about in the middle of fire season at this point. And, and so maybe we could have a little something material about that.
I could, we could, we could bring something back at a future meeting.
Don't we have several organizations, like, working on plans on that?
There is. There's some, there's some larger groups that are working on something, yes.
The question that faces us is, should there be changes to the city code?
Yeah, yeah.
That apply in that area.
Well, hold on. I, I think beyond that, I think you've got to be careful. Fire suppression mitigation folded into that is the safety element. So that's, that's a state requirement where we've got to update the safety element to be consistent with current, current state guidelines.
Right.
Um, in addition to that, CalFire will be reviewing our safety element in detail.
And the bill, is the building code doing this, and building codes, whatever group, is they're doing this in parallel? Because I assume you have to upgrade your building codes, or maybe they've already done that.
The, in terms of fire suppression mitigation.
Building appeals board is responsible for looking at Title Nine.
Right.
Don't know what they're doing.
Right.
They've been working on roofs for years.
That's part of the fire suppression.
Amy, you had a question?
Yeah, I just, this, this term, fire suppression mitigation, feels like a double negative. Um, is that a term of art in the planning process, or is that something that somebody put on there here in Ojai?
It's a term that, that we've all, that both council and, and this body came up with as a solution to. Because when looking at this, there were Yeah, there were literally two or three items that were merged together to address the, the requirement for the safety element to be updated through the general plan, as well as recognizing the need for, um, fuel mitigation or ways in which to suppress that dry fuel that you tend to get in the summer, because we don't get rain nine months out of the year. Uh, and ideas and solutions to that.
By putting those three words together.
Fire suppression mitigation.
You are, you, you are going to mitigate fire suppression, which I don't think is what you mean.
Maybe if we put an and in between suppression and mitigation.
But.
I'm, I'm up for anything, but it makes, it makes no sense right now.
I think of suppression as trying to stop fires from happening. Or maybe when they happen, to stop them from being so bad.
I like the word and, I like the slash, either one, but right now, it makes no sense.
In the, in the future, I can.
It feels good to me to put an and in there.
Yeah, we can throw an and in there if that satisfies.
You're suppressing and you're mitigating the fire.
Or you could say fire prevention, which is a broader term.
Come on.
Look, recognizing that it was really three different aspects folded into really one character piece, uh, bullet point that we're looking at here.
Use resilience, and then it covers them all.
Oh, resilience.
That's always a good word. It's a buzzword. It's a buzzword.
Okay.
You can divine. There is a definition of it.
Anything else that you want to cover here?
Well, I would also say, uh, the SEQA guidelines are something that have been hanging around. Uh, not every, not every commissioner is aware of this, but our SEQA guidelines, um, look, SEQA is, is, is through the state, right? So it trickles down to all projects. However, within that, within those regulations is a requirement for every city to have local guidelines, which we have. But guess when those guidelines were updated?
Nineteen, uh, seventy-nine.
Okay, so you, look, that's general plan stuff. Here, it's been since two thousand and two since they've been updated, so it's been twenty years now, and it's way overdue. There's been a lot of shifting and changing and modifications that have taken place, and there's a lot to unpack. And we brought on someone that's going to help us with that.
Yay, Alex.
So, hey, look, he, I'm, I'm looking forward to working with him on that. He doesn't even know that that, that project is something he's going to be working on yet. He's only aware of formula business and Title Ten. But there are a host of other things that he's going to be working on. So just, just know that.
SEQA generally is referred to as part of the public resources code, I think, and part of the government code.
Yeah.
Um, state law. And my reading of Title Ten, it just called out those things and said, "We're going by whatever the state says."
Right.
And if we need something different, then that's another one of those deeper dives that we have to go do.
There is, because within these guidelines, we can specifically identify, um, types of situations that are exempt.
So that's, example, obviously, is affordable housing, which we haven't revised our code to, to say, you know, we have people come before the plant, the city council saying, "You, you can't do affordable housing because you didn't do SEQA when it doesn't even apply." Because it's under.
Well, SEQA still applies. SEQA still applies, I don't want to get into the details on this, but SEQA still applies for affordable housing because you still have to find justification for the exemptions, and then you've still got to, sometimes there's technical documents that, that go along with that.
Five acres or infill, supposedly it doesn't.
And even with infill, you would still have to probably have technical documents to address it.
We ought to have those because we keep people, having people come for our city council, you know, being expert lawyers saying, you know, "You guys are not following the law because of SEQA," and.
Yeah, and the city's not immune to that either.
Because we don't have, well, maybe they could answer them, but they aren't.
Right. Look, I don't want to get into the details of it, but I, I get where you're going with, with that conversation, and it's appreciated.
Are we done asking questions? Then let's have our, let's open this for public comment. Mr. Larry Steingold again? And by the way, you may have noticed by now that there are a number of people who are and will be working on the municipal code details.
Thank you. I think that's great. Um, I think, uh, planning and the Planning Commission should be congratulated. I mean, you guys do, you people, excuse me, you do a lot of work in planning, and you need a plan for the future because without, if you fail to plan, the, everything will fail. And we need to have some sort of direction, and I know it's a lot of work. Um, and now that I'm considering myself an Ojai-ian, I think that's the word, um, this is home. And Planning Commission should do no harm. All right, please, do no harm. Try to game the plans you're planning, your ideas, at least see how they're going to look like. Try not to reinvent the wheel. I like it here. We came here because we like Ojai. Otherwise, we would have gone somewhere else. Everybody here who lives in Ojai and who seems to be still here wants it to be like there, just like that. Nobody wants any real change. At least change, no change without alternatives. So we need a Plan B and a Plan A, but please, do no harm. So, and everything you do. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here present or in the waiting room wishes to speak? All right, then we'll close public comment, and we'll move on to item five. Uh, future agenda items.
You're right.
Looks like Love Social Cafe is back again.
Already? You're fast.
Yeah, so in terms of the agenda, Love Social Cafe, this is not the outdoor dining, um, piece. This is actually a conditional use permit, permit for, um, for amplified music. So just know that's coming for this, this body at the next regularly scheduled meeting on September seventh.
Lucas, does that refer to the dining in the front of Love Social or in the back garden?
In the front.
Just in the front?
Correct.
Okay.
And then there's a variance. Yeah, I don't want to get into the details. Epi will get mad at me. The, and then we have a variance to a fence height for a pool and a front yard. I know that sounds highly contentious.
Been done before.
And it's been done before. I, I think you'll s, just know that I think you're going to be invited to, to visit the site as well. And I encourage you to, uh, to kind of understand.
Is that the one we've already been invited to?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, they've already received an invite. Okay, good. That's great.
If your visit is scheduled, then you're ready to go.
Can we bring our bathing suits?
The pool has not been built yet, so.
Oh, dang.
Uh, and then there's a general plan update. That's just a, a general update, update, just like I gave tonight. I think there'll be more information for me to provide as well. Hopefully, the summary will be well on its way, and I can give some, some teasers as well.
Results from the last workshop, you mean?
Right.
Yeah, good.
And then we'll obviously be talking about the work plan. There could be, um, another item regarding the work plan coming forward as well. We'll see, we'll see how far we get on some items.
Can I ask something? When you get ready to do this variance on a fence height, that we get some, uh, context about how this has been dealt with in the past? Because just to deal with it, you know, ad hoc seems, uh.
I'm sure, I'm sure context will be part of the administrative.
Yeah, I think history, context, history, not just on this site, but on variances and fences, just in general, um, whether or not there have been other variances. and fences, just in general, whether or not there have been other variances granted. I think that's all within the realm of, of necessity, just so that this body can get comfortable with.
And what's the logic of six feet, anyway?
Five feet.
Oh, five feet, is it? Okay, five feet.
Wait, what?
What?
No.
There are various five feet and four and five.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Oh, and the front yard, that's true.
Oh, the front yards are four feet.
If you pick up the municipal code from the website--
Uh-huh.
Do a search on fence, wall, and hedge, any one of those. You'll find there about 50 pieces of the code right now that mention one or another of those. And if you read the fence parts, you'll have a better understanding of, of what the rules are as they stand, and then you'll understand--
Well, I, I was more interested in the rationale for the rules rather than just the rules, because when you're doing a variance, you're trying to vary from the rationale. So if you have some understanding of why we have these for someone who's new--
Right. That'll, that'll be appropriate when the item comes up, yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to get too much--
I caution you, I caution you not to look for too much rationale in too many places.
Well, unfortunately, that's a occupational hazard of mine.
The last major change to Title 10 was 18 years ago, and no one here present had anything to do with it.
Yeah.
So coming up with that rationale, unless it was in the margin notes somewhere--
Reasonable speculation is probably the best way to put it.
By the way--
It's the shortest staff report I've ever seen for a revision to it.
I don't, I don't know if this would be ever recovered by the newspaper, but I have found that you, if you, you can go on the OBN site, and you, if you put things in parentheses, you'd be amazed at the articles you can get about stuff. I got about 100 articles about the history of affordable housing. It's like, my, my thing is like 180 pages.
I wish you had told me that before--
I think I sent it to you.
You did, and I just said, print it.
It was 192 pages. I know, but you can look up--
Okay, okay.
All right. September 21, Humane Society Emergency Shelter, that's an addition towards the front. You also see, anyway.
That's one everybody should go visit, because that's an interesting little group.
It is. Don't do it yet. Don't do it yet, not too soon. Yes, but yes, definitely go and take a look at it. And then obviously, the, the second item is Gables. I had identified that we were potentially going to have it maybe at this meeting tonight, wasn't ready. We've pushed it to the 21st, which is where we're looking at it landing. And then I've identified a number of pending, just so that you, you can understand that we have several items out there. There are more applications that have come in recently, so this body will be seeing a healthy dose of current planning projects, as well as an increasing dose of advanced planning projects, so.
Right.
We'll mix your both.
All right. We have then, I think the next option here is for commissioners' comments. Anyone have something that's happened lately that's really interesting that we need to know about? That was the wrong place. And we have time for staff. Anything else of general interest before we get to our city council liaison?
Uh, no, just to introduce, I was just introducing Alex--
Right.
--as a part of that item. And then I've updated this body on where we're at with the general plan update. Just know that it is, as, as we lean into addressing the summary from the workshop, I'll update this, this body on where it goes next. And we're looking at, well, I'll talk more about that later, not necessarily now, but we're nearing, we're near, we're starting to near the corner towards the end, which will include environmental as well as red line revisions.
Not the beginning of the end, but it might be the end of the beginning, as was once famously said.
That's probably one way to put it. But just recognize that all the work that's been going on up to this point is leading towards tangible information, so.
I don't believe we have a city council liaison this evening.
We do.
I'm right here. Hi, Steve.
Oh, very good. There's just big black screens on both sides of the room here. Didn't see you, Mayor.
Oh, really? I've been here the whole time, and, and I want to say thank you to all of you for your thoughtfulness, and I appreciate your hard work, because I know it takes a lot of time, and I look forward to, to discussing these items at city council. And welcome, Alex. Great to have you on the team, and thank you, staff, for all the hard work. Much appreciated. Good to see everybody here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. And seeing no other evident business before the commission at 7:17, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Is that a record?
Record. What is a record?
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor.
I told my wife it would be done by eight. She goes, no, there's no way that's going to happen. You guys will never get done with more than ten.
I thought I'd catch us in the middle of the--
I need a rest after the last several days of me.
Or the pledge.
Yeah.
I had a family member call me with an emergency. I couldn't say, but I have to get to work. It's, it's hard to stop that sort of thing.